The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Well, hi, everybody, and welcome to another edition of Eye on Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens is taking a break as she runs for the Oshkosh Common Council. Melanie Blackwell is taking a hiatus from the show, so you got me as host. I'm Tony Palmieri from the Department of Communication at UW-Oshkosh, and I'm joined today by co-host Ben Schneider. You all know him from the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. Ben and I today will be interviewing four candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. In our first segment, we'll have Ron Abbots. Then we'll be joined by incumbent Shirley Maddox. We'll then be joined by Meredith Shireman, and candidate Brian Bean will close out the show, so it should be a very, very exciting hour. We're going to start with candidate Ron Abbots. Ron, thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much.
Tony, I appreciate being here.
All right. Well, why don't you start off by telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for the council?
Well, I'm 65 years old. I'm retired, have four children, been married for 46 years, going on 47, nine grandchildren. I have no children that are taxpayers in the city of Oshkosh. Yes. I've been a property owner for 42 years, and the reason that I'm running for the council is multiple, but I felt it was time to stand up and be counted, and maybe I'm going to be a little abashed that I didn't do this a little quicker, but...
Ron, was there one particular thing that the current common council has done or not done that provoked you to get into the fray?
Probably the one key thing that got to me was the, what I called the raid on the general fund, which included the monies to renovate the county safety building where the police department is now in and out, and of course, then the $675,000 for the restrooms in Riverside Park for the amphitheater. And actually, there's some confusion. There's people actually believed I was against the amphitheater.
You're not.
Tony, I'm not against the amphitheater. I'm not against anything that'll promote this city. I'm against the way it was done and how it was funded.
You didn't like the use of taxpayer dollars the way they did it?
Well, that's true, Tony, but it was taken out of our general fund, and our bonding power is done out of there. And so, I don't think an issue like this was something that we needed to get into that fund for because possibly there'll be something down the road. And it gets pretty hard to get bonding when people are starting to wonder exactly how you spend that money. And right at the moment, at first blush, I tend to believe that $675,000 for those restrooms seems to me to be a little bit extravagant.
Okay. In the future, if you get elected to the council, would you approve any additional taxpayer money being used for the amphitheater?
I would have to answer that yes and no, based on what those improvements would be.
All right. You also know that the council waived the bidding process.
Absolutely.
Would you have supported waiving the bid?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Changing gears a little bit, Pollock Pool, you know, you've been here for a while, you know Pollock Pool's been here 40 years.
Absolutely.
Now it looks like it's close to being closed down.
I certainly hope not.
Okay, you want to see it kept open. How come?
Well, one, if I'm correct, and I think I'm close, we would need to come up with basically $100,000 to keep it open. I can't honestly say that I have been in the physical structure itself probably in recent years.
Right.
From the outside, it does not appear to me that this is in such a situation that it's not redeemable. I also happen to know, because I spoke with a few people, that it is conceivable there are organizations willing to do some things to help with funding to keep this pool open on a yearly basis after it's renovated.
So you do support keeping it open? That's the key thing. Banning smoking in restaurants. Should we ban smoking in restaurants?
Well, Tony, I'm a smoker. I don't like the fact that the issue is banning smoking or not smoking because smokers have rights as non-smokers do.
Okay. So you didn't support the referendum?
I certainly didn't. I would support nothing that jeopardizes a businessman who has his life investment in a business and has an entity to come in and tell them how to run. I am wholly in favor of any taxpayer-supported building being non-smoking because it's for everybody.
All right. As you know, we're going to elect a mayor this year for the first time in 50 years.
Yes.
The mayor, however, will not have veto power. Do you think a mayor should have veto power?
No.
No? How come?
Well, I guess I could honestly say if I felt it should be, then we should have had that here in the past, and we haven't had it.
Do you support us having a mayor?
Elected mayor?
Elected mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Ron, you know that leach company Federal Signal leaving Oshkosh. The city of Appleton responded by passing a resolution that places a boycott on the city purchasing any more leach products. Would you support such a boycott for Oshkosh? Should we boycott their products at this point?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. How about walking a picket line with strikers? If you were an elected official, and you've got, say, the people from Axol Tech out walking a picket line, and they want, they request elected officials to walk with them in solidarity, would you do that?
Tony, you're slipping a trick question in on me.
No tricks. We asked the type of candidate.
I can't answer that with a yes or a no. I guess I would have to see the issue.
Say you really supported the strikers. You really think they have a cause that's really right.
Well, by the same token, as an elected official, I would also support the business, so I'm right back in the same boat. You know, Tony, there isn't just black and white. Sometimes there's gray in between. In order to pass through...
That's what I've been trying to tell Ben for a long time now. We currently have a five-minute rule at the common council for citizen statements. You like that five-minute rule? Should we keep that?
I don't think there's anything wrong with the five-minute rule. What I think is, there is a problem in the respect that if you're there speaking quite often, you're not armed with quite as many facts as the council people.
Exactly.
And what I'm against is that you do not have an opportunity, after they come back to what you said, to at least have two minutes or three minutes to rebut.
Okay. And the citizens can't address agenda items. Do you think that's wrong?
Yes.
Okay. One last question, and I'm going to throw it over to Ben. What do you think is the major issue facing the city right now?
That's, Tony, I'm not laughing at you. I'm just laughing because the one major issue...
Is it the raiding of the general fund?
No, 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 no. There's, I guess at this moment in time, based on what's happened with the taxing structure in the city, I think one thing that has to be done, which it's going to sound like a multiple of answers, and I'd have to apologize for that, I think we have to look at how efficiently our city is running. Are we doing everything by throwing tax dollars at?
All right.
And our infrastructure is slowly eroding in this city while we're doing other things. I think we can't forget the infrastructure.
You've got that right, Ben.
Well, I want to ask a question I've asked everyone, and the common council recently approved a 5.7% tax increase that you saw in your December bill. If you were on the council, would you have supported that tax increase?
Again, Ben, I can't answer that. I'm not armed with enough facts. I did not see the budget. Again, I'd ask, as I did with Tony, a yes and a no, based on what I know. I can't answer yes or no without being armed with all the facts.
Well, do you think a 5.7% increase is reasonable?
No.
Okay. Back to your approval, Tony's question of approval, the use of a taxpayer's dollar for the amphitheater, and I kind of got a yes or no. My sense was, it depends on how it was structured, and I guess my question is, if it was structured differently to satisfy, you know, the bonding issues and taking money from the general fund, would you have supported the use, the $950,000, to purchase that property?
Well, I've had a feeling, actually, gentlemen, and had really not got into it, I'm not so sure we couldn't have bought that property for a lot less. I happen to be a stockholder in Wisconsin Public Service, and there is difficulty with abandoned properties and facilities for utilities, and especially if they're contaminated. And they really like to get away from them as easily as they can, and the factor that this was not going to be technically used as a building site, treat it more as green or brown space, we had some real leverage. And, you know, probably we might have been in a position to tell them, here's a take it or leave it situation, and let them come back.
So would you, reasonable to say that you probably wouldn't have supported it because the price was too high?
If that's what I had to support as a 950, I would have said, look, let's try to get that number lower.
And at what dollar amount would you say you'd have said yes?
Probably half the price.
Okay. One last question before I turn it back over to Tony. Currently, of the current members in the common council, who do you say is doing a good job?
Well, I would say that I've been somewhat impressed with Mr. Esslinger's job that I have seen him do. Mr. Peschel has asked some good questions. I feel Burke Tower at times has asked questions. I think from a standpoint of view of the council itself, it tends to be a case of where it pretty much seems to consistently run at a 5-2 vote, and I really am puzzled with that, Ben.
Ron, we only got enough time for you to look into camera three and tell the voters why they should support Ron Abbots on February 15th.
Well, I feel you should support me for one reason and one reason only, and that is, I've lived in this city for a large number of years of my life, and the things I have just explained here, and the other factor is, I've always been a man that when I decide I'm going to do something, I attack it and I get it done. I do not have a job. I am currently retired, and of course, as my wife would say, this might turn into a 40-hour-a-week job. It very likely could, because I think there's many things that need to be done and looked at in the community, and there are very likely ways to do some things better, but in a fresh look from someone else is always good.
All right. We want to thank Ron Abbots for being here. We're going to take a break, and when we come back, we're going to be joined by incumbent Shirley Maddox, and she'll tell us why she thinks she deserves reelection. Stay with us. Ron, thank you so much.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh. Tony Palmieri here, sitting in for Cheryl Hens and Melanie Blackwell. I'm joined by co-host Ben Schneider. You know him from the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education, and we are interviewing candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. As you know, there are 14 of them, and we're joined now by incumbent Shirley Maddox. She's running for her third term, is that correct?
Right.
And Shirley, why don't you start off? First of all, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Why don't you start off by telling us why you are seeking a third term?
Well, I'm retired, and I still have the time and the energy and the enthusiasm to continue studying the many issues that we are confronted with as we sit on the council.
All right. We're going to run through quite a few issues that you have been involved in in the last few years. You've been involved in some real controversial issues. One of them is, of course, the Riverside Park project.
Right.
And you've been one of the council members that has consistently voted to use taxpayer money for that project. Are we going to need more taxpayer dollars in that project?
Well, there's a phase, there's another phase in between the convention center and the amphitheater, and I have no idea when that is going to be considered, but...
But you probably will vote for additional taxpayer dollars for that project.
Right, but I think it always has to be a partnership. It's not total taxpayer dollars. It has to be...
Right.
Partners.
Right. And you did vote to waive the bid for CR Meyer, the bidding process.
Yeah.
And in hindsight, was that a good vote?
Yes. It was difficult, but when you consider, that was not just a simple building site, and all the engineering that dealt with the contaminated soil and what was where, I felt that the history of this particular business, CR Meyer, the quality of their work, that in this case, that they should finish the job.
Okay. Feel free to come in back.
Well, do you feel that, you know, there's a lot of people in this community that feel that they're adequately qualified to take a shot at that contract, and I think a lot of people feel spurned by the fact that they weren't afforded that opportunity. How do you respond to those that disagree and they feel that, hey, we're taxpayers too, and let us have an opportunity?
That's could be true, but some of these people don't live in the city. They don't even have a business in the city. They might come in the city and do jobs, but I take exception to people that are authorities on everything, and then when you get right down to it, you know, where is their real loyalty?
But the bidding process is designed to protect taxpayers, is that correct?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
And the council just didn't do that in this case.
No, but I also don't feel that the lowest bid is the best bid, and we've seen over the years that sometimes, and I also have problems sometimes if we have two bids, one's from outside the city and one's from outside the state. I'd like to have a little envelope that we could push a bit for considering that, but that's a whole nother topic.
Right, right. The Pollock Pool, do you think we should try and keep it open?
I think, I mean, there's a big study here, and the Pollock Pool was built in 1960. In 1980, they, 1976, they did a study. 1980, they did some remodeling, spent lots of money, and then we had another group come in and do another study. I think we're putting money in a place that's not attractive to people in general, and...
So we should close the pool?
I hate to do that, you know? You know I don't just shut stuff down and tear stuff down.
Right.
But in this case, I, okay, I mean, I can go on a whole nother tangent. I think we've got a lake that was a wonderful swimming place.
Sure.
And I think I'd like to get Mike Lazzard in on this and talk about the water quality at Menominee, or the county beach.
All right.
We've got other options.
All right. We want to run you through some additional topics. A smoking ban in restaurants, you opposed that, right?
I did.
And you still, do you still oppose that?
I opposed it because it was not fair. I think that if smoking is bad, which I believe it is, it should not, a single business should not be singled out to be kind of like the model. I think it should be across the board.
Okay, okay. We're voting for a mayor, as you know, for the first time in 50 years.
Right.
Mayor doesn't have veto power, and you don't think he or she should have veto power, is that correct?
Not at this time.
Why?
I think we're seven equal people, and I think that right now, the one thing the mayor can do is have a vision, or buy into a vision, and if people agree with that, then I think there's support, but for a veto, no.
All right. Federal Signal slash Leach left Oshkosh. Appleton, as you know, responded by boycotting their products. If a resolution like that came before the Oshkosh Common Council, would you support that?
I would, okay, I think if we need parts from Federal Signal, we'd be, you know, biting off our nose to keep our principles, so I really don't think we can say that we...
Well, Appleton made an exception for parts.
Did they? Oh, okay.
So would you support it under those conditions?
I would support that, right.
Okay.
And I suppose you also have to consider, it's going to be a good product, is it going to be the cheapest? Because, you know, there are taxpayers to, but I think it's a message that we could send out that this is not what you do. You don't come in and then take it away.
You don't think, should elected officials, or would you ever walk a picket line with strikers? There've been a couple of strikes while you've been on the council.
Yes.
You haven't been out there walking the picket line with them?
No, because I think I was advised that there were talks going on, and that at that time, my presence there would do no good for anybody. It would probably give moral support to the workers.
And that's valuable, isn't it?
It's valuable, but what's the, what is the company that's going, that's working with the union? You know, sometimes the people that are doing the negotiating know more about what's going on than the guy that's running the machine.
Do you think we should maintain the five-minute rule? You like the five-minute rule?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, if you have an idea of what you want to talk about, try it out at home. Put a bowl of water in the microwave, set it for five minutes, see if you can get through it. Really.
That's a good idea. I'll have to try that.
It works.
Currently, the citizens can't address the agenda items in their citizen statements. Do you think we should keep that? They should not be allowed to address agenda items?
Well, you know, I suppose the only thing that that would do is, if somebody could say, I liked what you did, or I didn't like what you did, but it's over with. It was voted on.
Right.
And they did have an opportunity to talk during the meeting...
Yeah.
...about those agenda items.
Right, right.
And so they had a chance to voice.
But sometimes you folks make amendments that actually change what they spoke on.
Yeah.
That's a little troubling.
Well, come back next week.
Right, right. I'm going to turn it over to Ben in a second. One more question. If someone were to ask you, Shirley, what is the major issue facing the city right now? What do you think it is?
I think we're on a real positive standing right now. Yesterday, the news hit the country that Madison is number two in the entire country as far as financially fit.
Right.
Green Bay is number four, and Appleton, Oshkosh, they put Oshkosh second, Nina, that municipal area is number five in the nation financially fit. We're seen as a good place to do business, to live, and I think that anything that builds on that is really, really crucial right now.
Okay, Ben?
I look at the council, and I think of Mayor Harris. He brought forth a smoking, a ban on smoking. I look at council member Paul Esslinger brought forth. He was really the spearhead behind the mayor referendum. What would you say in your four years in the council, what have you accomplished?
I think probably what I do best, I go to lots of, I'm on lots of committees, and I've served two and a half years writing the comprehensive plan, and that's going to be brought to the council on Tuesday, and probably attended over 60 meetings. And in that way, I tried to make sure that we addressed housing for low and moderate income, that we have housing that is not just segregated. Let's put all the poor people over here and build some big apartments, get them out of the way, that it's inclusive, that so many of these quality of life things, I wanted to make sure, and I just felt that the one way I could do that would be serving on these committees. And we've got our bicycle pedestrian plan, which is going to be implemented, and the neighborhood initiative, which was written before I ever got on the council, is now going to be implemented. We're looking at neighborhoods that are in need of revitalizing, and there's funding available to help them. And to me, I think I've been kind of a cheerleader in that sense, and I feel that that's where my strength lies.
Okay. Mr. Castle revealed at the last meeting that he and Mr. Martini of CR Meyer, great golfing buddies. They go to Florida together, apparently, and things like that. Do you think Mr. Castle should recuse himself from any further votes on the amphitheater?
No.
No?
No.
So you don't have problems with golfing buddies voting to give their golfing buddy no bid contracts?
I would hope that we have lots of friends, you know, all different strata of the community, and I think sometimes when you get together, when I was playing bridge the other night, I mean, my friends were screaming at me about turning out lights.
But if one of your bridge friends was dealing with million-dollar business items before the council, you wouldn't recuse yourself? If someone you played bridge with regularly...
Yeah.
...was potentially going to get a million-dollar contract from the city, you would vote on that? I don't think you would.
See, well, if the vote is simply to give them the contract or not, and it's the lowest bid, I don't think there's any problem there.
But actually, this wasn't the lowest bid. This was a contract, and many could argue that, you know, that that firm benefited, you know, it benefited in a financial way because of the relationship, because certainly Mr. Castle, a past mayor, certainly has some leverage in the council.
He's one vote. I really believe we are equal, and I think that's the importance of that council.
Okay. Shirley, we have enough time. We'd like you to look into camera three and tell the people why they should vote for you on February 15th.
Well, I came to the city council four years ago, and I was hoping to be a positive voice. I tried to cultivate a sense of respect for citizens and council members, and I felt that that was very important. During that time, I've made difficult decisions, as Tony's referred to, and I tried to explain how I arrived at those decisions, and I hope in the majority of cases, people understood my reasoning and agreed with my vote. And if they didn't, they know that I have a telephone, and they can contact me. I would be thrilled if I could continue to build on the progress that Oshkosh is making. I think we're at a turning in the road, and I think the road is wide and bright, and I would just like to be the voice that carries out the good news of Oshkosh.
All right. And we want to thank Shirley Maddox for taking the time to be here. We're going to take a break. When we get back, candidate Meredith Shireman will join us. Stay with us. Thank you, Shirley.
You're welcome.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh. Tony Palmieri here, sitting in for Cheryl Hints, joined by co-host Ben Schneider. He's from the Oshkosh Area School District. He's the guy with the UPS haircut. You all know him. We're now joined by another candidate for Oshkosh Common Council. She is Meredith Shireman, and she's going to tell us why she's running for the council. She's going to answer some questions for us. Meredith, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
All right. Why are you running for the council? Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Okay. Been back in Oshkosh, graduated from UWO, been back in Oshkosh for about 10 years, and have seen Oshkosh change in the last 10 years. Really doing a lot of great things in the last couple of years, has a lot of momentum going. Want to make sure that we continue that momentum, but want to make sure that we do it with proper planning and making sure we can pay for the things that we all want.
All right, well, let's ask you some questions. As you know, there's been an amphitheater project going on in Riverside Park, and it's only in its first phase. There's going to be more phases of this. Do you think that more taxpayer dollars should be used on this project?
I think sometimes it does make sense to contribute taxpayer dollars.
Okay, so you will...if elected, you will support the use of more taxpayer dollars on that project?
At some level, yes.
All right. As you know, the council voted to waive the bidding process as part of this project. Would you have voted to waive the bid?
I would not have.
Why not?
Bidding process, you need to have for proper checks and balances.
Okay.
And I just think it's fair and equitable to put it out there to everybody.
All right. The Pollock Pool, as you know, has been very popular in this community for many years. Now it looks like we might have to close it. Do you think it should close?
You never like to close an amenity like that, but I don't think it made sense to continue putting money into Pollock Pool.
Okay, very good. We had a very divisive referendum in Oshkosh a year ago on banning smoking in restaurants. What's your position on that? Should we have a smoking ban?
I voted no. Certainly, the business owners have the right to decide whether they should or should not have smoking in their establishments.
All right. You also know that we're voting for a mayor in Oshkosh for the first time in many years. However, this mayor will not have veto power.
Right.
Do you think the mayor should have veto power?
Currently, no. I'm comfortable with the city government, form of government that we currently have. I personally think that we need to make sure that the head of our city has qualifications, is a professional, those kind of things. To be a mayor, you really only need to have 200 signatures, be a city resident, and be 18 years old, so I'm comfortable.
Should we have an elected mayor?
I'm okay with that.
Did you vote yes to have an elected mayor?
I did vote yes to have an elected mayor.
All right, very good. As you know, Meredith, the Leach Company, Federal Signal, left Oshkosh, lots of jobs lost. The city of Appleton responded by placing a boycott on future purchases of their products. What if a resolution like that came before the Oshkosh Common Council? Should we boycott their products?
I'd say no.
How come?
It doesn't make...it's almost sour grapes, if you will. I think if they can come out with a product that's better and cheaper, we need to look at that first and foremost. It's unfortunate. I'm not happy that they left by any means, but boycotting their products certainly doesn't do any good now.
All right. We've had strikes in Oshkosh, and elected officials rarely walk on picket lines here with strikers. Would you ever walk on a picket line?
No.
How come?
I don't think it's the place of an elected official to do so. I think that you can get your message across in different ways.
What if you've got information that suggests to you that the company really is negotiating in bad faith with the workers?
Then I would try to have an open meeting and discuss it with both the managers and the workers, something like that. I don't think standing outside shouting at cars and holding up signs is the answer.
Isn't that your style?
I don't think it's the answer. It doesn't matter if it's my style or not. I just don't...I don't think that's very productive.
All right, very good. We've got a five-minute rule for citizen statements at the Oshkosh Common Council.
Yes.
Should we maintain that five-minute rule for speakers?
I'm okay, as long as if they need additional time, they request it, and it's, for the most part, granted.
And currently, the council doesn't allow the citizens to address agenda items during that citizen statement. Should we allow citizens to address agenda?
I think they should.
They should be able to.
I do. I think they should pretty much talk about what they need to during that five-minute.
All right. I'm going to turn it over to Ben in a second. Before I do, just one last question. What do you see, Meredith, as the major issue facing the city right now?
Couple of them. We need continued investment in the city. We need continued infrastructure improvement, and we need to continue to revitalize older neighborhoods.
Sounds good.
What do you mean by continued investment in the city?
Making sure that we are looking forward, seeing, doing exploratory measures of what the city needs. The amphitheater's a great project, for instance, and we need to invest some of our dollars and our resources in making sure that that happens correctly.
How much more money should we invest in that project, or in Phase Two?
Yeah, that's a good question. I get asked that a lot. I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know all of the Phase Two and Phase Three requirements, but it's going to need private public partnerships as well in Phase Two and Three.
If the city came to you as a council...as a possible councilperson and said, you know, "We need to invest X more dollars, but that's going to increase our tax rate 10 percent," would you support that?
10 percent? Probably not.
Would you have supported the 5.7 percent tax increase that the council passed in December?
You know, it is hard to say that. I'm looking for an efficient and effective government, and that starts way before November. So I would have liked to have hoped that we could have shaved some of our increases earlier on, so we didn't get to a 5.7, because I don't really consider 5.7 percent tax increase reasonable.
One question that Ben has asked...I'll ask it for you this time.
Sure.
Of the current common council, which members of the council do you think are doing a very good job right now? Or which ones do you identify most with?
You know, I think...I know it sounds crazy, but I think they both do. I think Paul Esslinger clearly has a lot of good things to say at times, and I also think that Frank Tower contributes well. I think Shirley has some good things to say. Certainly, Mark Harris does. I think I'd fall in the middle. I certainly know how to say yes, and I certainly know how to say no. So I don't know if I relate to one side or the other a little bit more.
One of the candidates has called for...all of the candidates putting a limit on how much they'll spend on their campaigns, less than $1,000. Do you plan on spending more than $1,000 in your campaign?
I do.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have...do you know how much you're going to spend on your campaign?
I don't. Hopefully, I'd make it past February 15th. I think if you can do it, if you can get your message out, I think that's great. Under $1,000, I'm not sure how much I'm going to have to. I know that I'm working very hard on getting my message out, and it very well could be over $1,000.
Can you see yourself spending $5,000, $6,000?
I sure hope not.
Okay.
I don't.
It's possible, if you feel you're in a close race.
Oh, you know, it's hard to tell two months from now, but I don't think I'm certainly going to spend $5,000.
Okay.
You mentioned, you know, who's doing a good job on the council. Of the candidates out there right now running for mayor, who do you plan on supporting?
You know, I need to listen to your show that you taped right before this, and really, I'm sure you ask them very good questions and try to get both takes on them. I've said earlier, I think that they both bring great value to the current council. As far as who's going to lead the city in a mayor position, I'm not sure who's going to do a better job yet.
Actually, following up kind of in a different vein.
Okay.
The Northwestern reported today that there's a developer that's interested in developing some riverfront property. It would cost...it's a $62 million potential development-
Mm-hmm.
-which invariably will cost the taxpayers some concessions. I'm guessing purchasing the Mercury Marine site as a potential...if you were elected to the common council, would you approve the use of general fund dollars or float some general obligation bonds to buy that site? And if so, is there a cap that you wouldn't go above?
I think it's very exciting that they're coming in and they're even looking at Oshkosh. I think that's a really great sign. I understand through the newspaper and that article only that we are going to have to put some money up there. To put a dollar amount, I can't tell you what it is and what I would cap at. It's probably similar to the amphitheater, that we have to put some monies towards it, but I can't give you a dollar amount, because I'm not that close to it yet.
Okay. There's a couple of groups out now, Meredith, with names like Progress Oshkosh and Forward Oshkosh, largely Chamber of Commerce-related types of organizations. And some of the members of those groups have been saying that there's too much negativity in the city. What's your view on that? Is there too much negativity, criticism, do you think there is?
At times, I do. I think even in the council race, we spend so many times why we should not vote for somebody else versus talking about why you should vote for, you know, for me or us.
Well, like in the discussion over the amphitheater, do you think there's some people in the community...Mr. Rickman at the Northwestern has referred to these people as cobblestoners.
Right.
Do you think there are cobblestoners in this community that just don't support anything?
I'm not for...actually, I like Stu Rickman a lot, but I'm not for labeling people, so I think saying that they're one type of person or another is not appropriate. Similar to the Fab Five, I don't think it's appropriate to be calling those folks that as well. I think that there are some people that have dug their heels in and just are really having a hard time seeing forward, because they're so ingrained in...
Because you see something like the amphitheater as...to you, that does represent progress in the city.
Progress, it allows for potential to be done right. I mean, I think it's very exciting, but we need to make sure that we're very judicious, we're very conscientious, we plan it, et cetera.
Okay, Ben?
People will be watching this, obviously on a tape delay, or not obviously, but why should people vote for you?
Two very simple reasons. I'm passionate, I'm committed for the city of Oshkosh, making sure we continue on the pace that we're going, but also making sure that we're very smart doing it. $58 million budget, huge budget. You need to have people who...council people who are dedicated, who have the ability to distribute a $58 million budget, making sure that we have an effective, accountable government.
How much time do we have, Mary Helen? We have two...okay.
Wow. I feel like I'm getting fired at here, so...
Yeah, that's good. Mr. Castle's running for mayor. He's on the council. He revealed last week that he's very good friends with the C.R. Meyer president. And do you think he should recuse himself from votes affecting C.R. Meyer?
I'm not sure how close of friendship he has with him. I think that he has the ability to separate business and pleasure. I certainly hope he does. I think if there was any question, he would bring that forward, or even Mr. Kraft would ask for that as well.
Okay.
Well, I presume you watched that council meeting in which she talked about his golfing buddy.
I did.
Did you have a problem with his statement?
I think it was a little casual in...I think it was a little casual, but I don't think he meant any harm towards it. I certainly don't think he knew, you know, the fallback that has come from it.
What is there specifically in your background that you think qualifies you for the council?
I've run two businesses, and I've done a very good job at it. I know how to run a tight, efficient operation. I'm given goals every day, every year, and you just have to fall within them, and you have to make it work. And I think if you have that kind of mentality on city government, I think we'll do a better job.
All right. And finally, why don't you look into camera three and tell people why they should vote for you on February 15th?
Okay. February 15th is coming very quickly. You all have an opportunity to make sure that you get to know all of us. Two things stand me...allow me to stand apart. First of all, I'm very committed, I'm very passionate about making sure that Oshkosh is an even better place to live and do business. Second of all, I have the business experience it takes. I know how to run a very efficient, effective government, and I'm very passionate about that as well. So please vote for me, February 15th, Meredith Shireman.
Rhymes with firemen. That should be your campaign slogan.
Thank you.
We're going to take a break.
Thank you.
When we get back, we're going to be joined by Brian Bain, and he's also running for the common council. Stay with us. Thank you so much.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom. And that's what all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh. Tony Palmieri here, sitting in for Cheryl Hints, and I'm joined by my co-host, Ben Schneider, from the Oshkosh School Board. And we've been having interviews with candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. And our final guest tonight is candidate Brian Bain. Brian, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Tony.
All right. Why don't we start off by having you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for the council?
Sure. My name is Brian Bain, and I'm running for the Oshkosh Common Council. I am a member of the Oshkosh community since 1999. This is where I met and married my wife, Amanda. I am running because I have always had a commitment to public service. I feel like it's important to be prepared when you run for council, and the last two[1537.33] I feel like it's important to be prepared when you run for council, and the last two years, I've attended the majority of the council meetings, been involved in some city government and some nonprofit and just involvement opportunities in the community. I believe that I can offer Oshkosh a vision, a vision for the future and an agenda that can be set forth, but I want to be able to create that with you. And finally, I have a personal vested interest in the community. As a young person in the community, my wife and I plan to raise our family here and spend a significant amount of time here, and I want to be a part of that change.
All right. Thank you. We're going to ask you a couple of questions and see if you can get your specific answers on them. As you know, the Riverside Park project, the amphitheater, fairly pricey, lots of taxpayer money. If you get elected to the council, will you vote to put more public money in that project?
I think it depended on, you know, what they were asking the money for, but I think it's important to realize that the public sector plays a role in development in the city. We can't expect the private sector to step forward and put money into developments without the public sector to play a significant role in that.
All right. Now, when the council voted to waive the bidding process for C.R. Meyer for part of the project, I think you spoke at that meeting.
I did.
And you supported waiving the bid?
For this instance only, yes.
All right. All right. As you know, Pollock Pool has been in the community for a long time. It looks like we may have to close it. What's your view on Pollock Pool? Should it close?
I think Pollock Pool has been declining. I think the numbers the last seven years. The facility itself is in decline. I guess I would question whether or not it's a good investment for the city to patchwork a facility. The $30,000 that's been kind of thrown out there would have only paid for the staff and operational fees. That wouldn't have really actually opened Pollock Pool. So right now, I'm not in favor of having Pollock Pool open.
All right. As you know, the issue of banning smoking in restaurants was very divisive in this city. What is your stand on that?
I look at it from a strictly public health issue. I would be in favor of a smoke-free work environment. I understand that there are some small business issues there. I would like to, first of all, look at Nina and Fond du Lac and look at their numbers to see how it's affected the businesses. And I think it's time for the state to step up. You look at all the communities around Wisconsin that are tackling this issue. Maybe the state needs to play a role.
All right. Very good. You oppose veto power for the mayor, is that correct?
No. It's not that I oppose veto power. I think that if we're going to have a strong mayor with veto power, I think we need to look at our form of government. I'm not sure it's in congruence with a council-manager form of government, and so I think we need to look at that if we're going to have a strong mayor.
So if we keep the form of government that we have, then you don't want veto power for mayor, is that right?
Correct.
All right. All right. Very good.
Do you agree with having an elected mayor?
I have no problems with electing mayor, yeah. That's fine with me.
So you supported that referendum?
Yeah. I have no problem with that.
All right. As you know, Leach left the city, Federal Signal.
Yes.
Appleton responded by placing a boycott on their products. If such a resolution came before the common council, would you support something like that?
If I knew that we could get replacement parts for the trucks that we had, and if...
Which is the way the Appleton resolution's written.
Okay. Yeah. And if I knew that it would not affect... To my knowledge, and I don't know specifics, I know there are some people who are left workers in Oshkosh, and I would want to make sure, obviously, that we're not going to impact their jobs as well. So there are a couple of factors there to consider.
Okay. How do you feel about elected officials walking picket lines with strikers?
You know, that's a delicate line. I support unions. I have no problem with that in any way, shape, or form, but I think as a city-elected official, some of our best work can be behind the scenes in making sure that both sides are coming to the table in a fair and equitable manner, and I think that that's the role that we should be playing.
All right. Currently have a five-minute rule at the council meetings. You support maintaining that five-minute rule?
Yes.
All right. What about changing it so that the citizens could address agenda items during that?
My only concern with that is that it could potentially create more banter back and forth. I know that it would be an opportunity... I've heard some people say that it would be an opportunity for citizens to have the last word, but really, council member statements would follow, and then that would maybe allow another council member to, again, go back and forth with another resident.
See, my concern has always been, Brian, I watch these meetings. I don't go as much as you do, but I watch them. Often, even though the citizen gets a chance to address the items on the agenda, the council then amends items so that what I addressed as a citizen is not really what they voted on, and then I have no other opportunity to speak on it. That just doesn't strike me as fair.
Yeah. I guess it's an opportunity... Look at our school board, and I guess look at our county board, and when they offer... I believe the school board, Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they have at the very beginning, agenda items, non-agenda items, and that's it. That's the only time you have to speak. So I think it's... You know, we do allow people to speak on the issues when it comes up. I just don't want to create another back-and-forth opportunity where people can, you know, be negative about a person rather than an issue.
Sure. I'm going to turn it over to Ben shortly.
Sure.
Before I do, what do you think, Brian, is the major issue facing the city right now?
I believe the major issue in the city right now is economic development. The city needs to look at how it's going to be able to pay for responsible and affordable services, and I believe, if I can, we have three ways that we can do that as a city to pay for that. We can either create new economic development and increase the tax base. The city then can... If not, then the city's going to have to raise taxes on the existing tax base, and I don't think that's a good idea. And finally, we would have to cut. And if we're going to cut, roughly 75 percent of our budget is people, and we're going to be cutting jobs. And I'm not sure that that's the best solution for development in our community.
All right. Ben?
The city, the council in December approved the 5.7 percent tax increase that went out with the property tax bill. Do you think 5.7 percent increase on taxes is reasonable?
I'm not sure that a particular, excuse me, percentage is appropriate. I think what's appropriate is, are we getting the best value for our investment? And if you look at the year prior, the city actually had a zero tax levy increase, so spreading it out, it was what, 2.5, 2.24, 3/4 percent? And I've heard some, you know, candidates stating that that would be a reasonable tax rate, and I think that... I guess I can't answer what would be at a specific rate that would be reasonable.
Well, with the services that we were getting for 2005, was that 5.7 percent reasonable?
I believe yes.
Okay. Also, on the... Back to the taxpayer dollars for amphitheater, if you were on the council at the time, would you have voted to spend $950,000 to buy that property?
You know, I have to admit, I don't recall the exact conversation that occurred there. I'm not sure that I would be in a position to say yes or no. I do support the public looking at that investment. You know, there are some laws in Wisconsin that actually encourage communities and municipalities to purchase contaminated land so that they can remediate that and then turn around and sell that and have private developers utilize that.
You've thrown the term around investment several times. How is that... Define how that's going to be an investment for the community and what return we're going to see as a result of the amphitheater?
Sure. I think it's an opportunity where we can have another entity in the community that's contributing to the tax base. In addition to that, I think it's an opportunity where we have revenue coming into the community, performances, ticket sales, concessions. I know that we're not sure how that's all going to work at this point, but I do feel that the city will have some sort of amount that's drawn in from that. And so I think that, you know, an expenditure is, I need a hose for my car. An investment is something that's going to be long-term. It's going to create value and quality of life in the community and actually maybe draw more business and families to Oshkosh to call home.
Well, just following up on that, you said to increase the tax base, but essentially by buying that from the private sector, we took it off the tax base. So quantify how we increase the tax base with that facility.
In turn... I guess I don't understand your question.
A few minutes ago, you said we're going to increase the tax base with that facility, but in a sense, it went from a taxpayer entity to paying zero taxes because now the city owns it. So how are we going to increase the tax base with that facility?
Well, with that facility, I believe that it's going to bring in more business and families to the community, which are going to spend more dollars in the community, which then brings in more revenue.
Okay. Brian, there are groups out now, like Progress Oshkosh, Forward Oshkosh, that have been very vocal about the idea that there's too much negativity in the city, especially aimed at things like these projects.